Hi John.
Hi Greg.
How are you?
Good.
Hi Greg.
Hey, how's everyone doing?
Good, how are you?
Cooking dinner.
Alright.
Hi Michael.
Hey everybody.
Hey Michael.
Hello, good afternoon directors, nice to see you again.
How are you?
Doing well, I I've forgotten that there were two Michaels in this room.
We were all saying hello to both of you, obviously.
Right, well, thanks very much.
Well, I don't know about Donner.
That's not very nice. Anybody have a swamp cooler I can borrow?
What are we working with on the on the other side of the hill in terms of temperature?
Oh, not as not as bad as yesterday.
I got the notice that PG&E is gonna potentially use my batteries as backup tonight. Starting at six.
Uh, how does that work? Do you use your batteries?
Yeah, you well, you have to allow them to do it, and they they drain your batteries to help feed their system, you know?
There's gotta be a switch to say, no, thank you.
There is.
If you need help flipping that switch to no, thank you, I will help you with that.
Well, I mean, but the idea is, I I don't get my air conditioning and they get the power they store up in my batteries, basically, which helps the whole grid.
Right.
There's just a blackout in Maraga.
Blackout as in?
A rolling blackout?
Rolling blackout.
I guess Campolindo's had their power shut off last four days, and I don't know if it was a breaker that popped, or if it was an actual rolling blackout, but that whole Campolindo area from four to eight the last couple days.
Wow, I know that on, what day was it? Maybe Sunday, we went up, we were gonna breakfast up in Maraga and the whole, you know, the high school, everything was gone, and they were putting out, you know, the streetlights didn't, nothing worked. And I didn't think it was that, I mean, it was at nine thirty in the morning, I don't think they're having a blackout at that point, I think it thinks just broke.
Probably a transformer.
Yeah. Chief, you're back in your office.
Yes, sir, just in time to enjoy all of the the great weather, which has been so magnificent.
Um, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, it's five o'clock. Welcome to the Maraga and Fire District Special Board Meeting, September seventh, twenty twenty-two. Marcia, can we do a roll call, please?
Director Bates.
Here.
Director Danziger.
Here.
Director Jex.
Here.
Director Jorgens.
Here.
President Donner.
Here. Um, continuing, I think, the tradition I started last meeting, I think, just to honor our chief and his commitment to our country and the military, chief, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, under God with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna open public comment for items not on the agenda. Marcia, have we received any written correspondence, or do we have any hands raised?
We do not have any written correspondence, and we do not have any hands raised.
Thank you, Marcia. I will close public comments. Three point one, reviewing MOFD administration citation process for vegetation abatement and land abiding public rights of way.
Good evening, directors, and as you see in the staff report, we've staff and council have reviewed it. This evening, we have representative from District Council's office, who I believe you remember from redistricting, Michael Cohen, who will walk us through the the work and the research that we have done, you'll be able to answer any questions, and then I I'm able to provide an update with regard to the parcels that we that raised this question during the hearing last month, with any further ado, Michael, the floor is yours.
Thanks very much, chief, and good evening, directors. So this matter, as you know, concerns the process by which the district administer citations for noncompliance with the fire code on lands abiding public rights of way like roads and streets. You're all, of course, familiar with the administrative citation process, and as you know, part of that process involves identifying the party responsible for a violation of the fire code, because it's that party that has issued a citation. I'm advised that doing so is straightforward under most circumstances, but officially verifying the correct landowner is extremely resource intensive because it requires retrieving documentation and retaining a surveyor for every violation. Fortunately, the law creates a presumption found in the Civil Code that quotes an owner of land bounded by a road or streets owns to the center of the way, though a party can show otherwise. So in other words, half of a street upon which a lot abuts is usually considered part of that law. The district heeds this presumption for purposes of roadside vegetation abatement. It assumes, for example, that landowners abutting roads or streets own land immediately adjacent to that road or street. But where a landowner can establish the documentation that they're not the owner of land that's maintained violation of the fire code, the district will then revise or cancel that citation as appropriate. But there is another piece of the puzzle here, namely, certain land abiding public rights of way belongs to the county, the city of Arinda, the town of Maraga, local HOA, or some other entity, and not the abutting landowner. So some of these entities have actually adopted ordinances, rules or regulations that place the responsibility for roadside vegetation management on the abutting landowner, meaning that landowner is responsible for fire code violations despite not owning the land. The district isn't in a position to establish the correct interpretation of these ordinances, rules and regulations. So for that reason, the district doesn't revise or or cancel citations on the grounds that a separate entity's ordinance, rule or regulation might shift responsibility for a fire code violation. So before you today are are two practices to consider in the district. The first is presuming an adjacent landowner's responsibility for land abiding a public right of way for purposes of enforcement of our code, consistent with the Civil Code. And the second is the practice of issuing citations to the owners of land maintained violation of the fire code, regardless of the ordinances, rules and regulations of separate entities. I'm available to answer any questions that you may have about this.
Go ahead, Director Jorgens.
So I I just talked to some of the city officials today, and they said that there are a number, obviously, of private roads in Arinda, but there's roughly a hundred miles of public roads, and it was their opinion that when the county gave all of the public roads in Arinda, at least, I don't know anything about Maraga. When the county gave the public roads that it owned, because they've been dedicated to the county as public roads, if they had accepted them as public roads. And so when city, when Arinda became its own little town, and the county gave them all the roads, those were by definition owned by the city. So all public roads in Arinda are owned by the city, they are not easements, they are not anything else, they are owned by the city. And so, and and anything that isn't a public road, in their opinion, would not be owned by the city. So I just wonder if that kind of complicates, so we we sort of by definition know then that all public roads. And when I say public, I mean, they're maintained by the city, that kind of public roads, and we know where those all are, the city has a map that shows all the public roads, because they're the ones they pave and maintain. So it seems to me that, you know, our our whole presumption of the fact that we, you know, that the roads are owned by, you know, the by the to the center of the road is not a very valid assumption for, at least for Arinda.
Yes, sir, and I think it certainly could be the board's direction that we we follow that that direction, and then we would issue the citations directly to the city, I think, as we've previously discussed, the challenge has to do with one where the 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 practical, sorry, the legal challenge lies with where the line actually is, which is, I think, varies by parcel. And then the practical challenge, which, to your point, I I believe is appropriately the city's challenge, not ours. But that the the ownership of that roadside is poorly understood, and depending on the degree of landscaping, an individual property owner may have done. I I I think the response to discovering someone out front, cutting that vegetation is going to vary wildly, depending on whether or not it's in front of their house, whether it's landscaped, etc. That said, though, I I think, to your point, if if we know, have a reasonable certainty that, or the city acknowledges that they own all of the public roads, it would be a relatively simple matter of policy for us to obtain the map layer that the city has showing the roads that they believe they own. And then, in those cases, we we would issue the citations directly to the city, and the enforcement of either ordinances or the their ordinance having to do with the obligation of a adjacent landowner to maintain that city-owned property, or the city's decision to carry out the mitigation, you know, that that wouldn't that wouldn't involve the fire district, because that would be the city enforcing their ordinance, or or the city maintaining their property. Fire district's interest is agnostic of the owner is ensuring that the property is maintained. But that would be appropriate for the board to provide direction with regard to how we should proceed.
Couple, couple more thoughts, and maybe a solution in addition to all that. So I I think one of the challenges is the cities, as I understand it, the cities, I think they call it a trim ordinance or whatever, doesn't go as far as, doesn't go as far into the property potentially, number one, in other words, it only covers like the first three feet and, you know, fifteen feet high and three feet in, it doesn't go to the edge of their property necessarily. And so it's not obvious that having the city enforce its ordinance would actually get us all the way there anyway.
No, sir, I, two different things, the the city has the authority to enforce the trim notice on on private property, city property is not owned by the city for the maintenance of the roadside, they they as a general statement that that is not used very widely, if at all, that I'm aware of. But what I'm referring to is the fire code requires that the owner of the property maintain that property in accordance with the fire code. There are times and places, specific three and fifteen, where the city's trim notice and the fire code requirements overlap. But in this case, there is an additional city ordinance that says, passed in two thousand fourteen, which says the adjacent property owner is responsible for the maintenance of the roadside, which I believe in, I've deferred to the city to to explain or define their own ordinance. But my understanding of it is, is that creates an obligation of a adjacent property owner to maintain the city's property on the roadside.
And so my point is that it's only the first three feet, because there it's a, I thought.
No, sir, there's two different things, though, the the trim note is correct, but I'm talking about a separate ordinance that has to do with the obligation of a private parcel owner to maintain the city's property, not their own. And that the fire code, so what what there's a two-step process here, the fire code says that you have to maintain the roadside generally, and the whole property, but generally speaking, the the violation notices we've been issuing that are in question here are three and fifteen, the the map to the trim notice, however. In this case, it would be a fire code violation citation that's issued to the city. And then if the city has a subsequent ordinance, it says the maintenance of that city-owned property is the obligation of the adjacent property owner. Then the city could enforce their ordinance having to do with maintenance, not the trim notice, but their their ordinance having to do with the neighboring property owner's responsibility for maintaining the city-owned land in order to achieve compliance with the fire code.
Okay, great, and and I guess the place I was gonna head, regardless of, i- if there is that ordinance, that's great. But have we looked into the idea of having the a a joint enforcement mechanism so that they could hire, or whatever, have an agreement with MOFD to do, to to give the notices, or can we give joint notices, can we print, you know, print something that says the city and MOFD are citing you for doing this, you know, or or enforcing your property?
Well, I mean, but, so, no, we have not, we haven't had those staff conversations yet, pending the board's directing tonight, sir. But I think to the to the basic point there is that the the board's direction last month was that MOFD cannot cite the owner of an adjacent property for an obligation to maintain the city's property. And so in the case of if the city owns the public roads, and the public roads include a a boundary that exceeds the paved surface, then the board's direction last month was that MOFD could not issue a citation to a resident to maintain someone else's, in this case, the city or town's property, and so MOFD could issue a a joint citation that said, from your side of the property line back, you must do a hundred-foot fuel break, maintenance, etc., etc., all of our requirements. And then the city, if insomuch as the city has the ability to require an adjacent property owner to do maintenance on their land that's adjacent to the road, then the city could issue a parallel notice informing the resident of their requirement under city ordinance to maintain the city-owned land alongside of the road.
Right, so why couldn't they just hire MOFD to issue their citations and put them on the backside of our citation?
I I refer to counsel, generally speaking, or generally speaking, the the, as I understand it, is an an agency is capable of enforcing it only its own ordinances, certainly, we could explore signing, entering into a MOA or or some other agreement or MOU that would allow us to do that, but I I think the question for the board is, as we saw last month, if a resident comes to appeal the hearing, are they coming to the MOFD board, or are they going to the city council to appeal the city, the city's ordinance requiring the abutting property owner to maintain the the land? Certainly, we could, the the MOFD board could hear an appeal having to do with the the fire code violation, but in this case, that that's not how the citation came to them, citation came from via the city ordinance, and and I I question, I I do have concerns about the city's ability to hear to hear appeals to an enforcement of a city ordinance of the MOFD fire code that an MOFD staff member issued the citation, that that feels that feels a little complicated.
The city of Arinda hires county sheriffs to enforce its ordinances.
Yes, sir, acting as the Arinda PD, yes, sir.
Fine, but that's, so you're acting as an agent of the city of Arinda?
Yes, sir, should that be the board's direction to do so, and should the city be interested in entering into that agreement, we certainly could explore that.
It it just seems like the the person that has the most knowledge of what needs to get done, and is out there issuing a citation for the rest of the property, seems like it'd be, you know, it saves a lot of time and effort, and I can't imagine the city, the objective is to get the stuff to go away, I mean.
Yes, sir, but this is, that was the root of last month's discussion as well, and that the board's direction was very clear last month, that that we don't, if 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 the property owner doesn't own it, and the city owns it, then it it's the city's obligation to enforce, and and MOFD is not in a position to enforce the city's to enforce an adjacent property owner to do work on the city or the town's land.
At the moment, we're not, yes, but we could be under contract.
Yes, sir.
Do we know what the city of Maraga, does it have similar?
The the town has a similar ordinance, theirs is complicated by sidewalks, I believe they have an amendment coming forward in November. The the way the town's ordinance is written, it did, in, it's premised on the presence of a sidewalk, which doesn't apply in many of these cases.
But, you know, that's another fix, potentially, we could have the two, the city and the town issue an ordinance that says, you know, the adjacent property owner has to meet fire code. If that isn't clear enough already, and and then hire us to go, you know, while we're, you know, at the same time, we're issuing a a a citation to the adjacent property owner, we can, you know, have a joint citation that says, by the way, everything all the way to the edge of the road has to be done. And you, one way or another, we're enforcing one of the two.
Yes. Yes, sir, we, they said we could certainly will engage in a staff conversation, I think this would be appropriate conversation for the for both the two-by-two committee, and potentially a a three-way meeting with the with Maraga, Arinda, MOFD, and potentially county supervisors' representation to come up with a a single uniform solution for all of them, let's the district.
You know, I I had, I live on Orchard, and I had my street repaved, oh, maybe five, six years ago. And, you know, I have about three feet that I thought was the city's property. That was actually, I thought, part of the street, and when the repavers came, they were crystal clear on where my property line was. And they do, they would not repave it. So I just, I think the city has a, and and Director Jorgens, you've been part of the paving process, I believe.
Yep.
Don't they have a pretty clear distinction on these property lines?
Well, I don't know that I ever got into that level of detail when we were doing the paving stuff, but they certainly know which roads are private and public.
Oh, no, I I I understand that, but but to the chief's point is, and kind of the point I'm making is, is I think the city on public roads, and the incident we were discussing last month was St. Mary's, which is a public road. I think there is a clear distinction, and I think the town and the cities know exactly where these lines are.
So I'm pretty sure when they actually, I'll 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 take it back, I do know more about this. When they have a road pit, road paved, they actually do survey. Now, they don't survey it just randomly when the road isn't being paved, but they certainly know where they are planning on paving and how big it is and how thick it is, and they're, they know a lot about it, and they often do actually, they know, just go out and, you know.
Right, so. Yes, my point is that there, my point is, is that there is three feet in the front of my house that I thought was clearly city property. And I thought when they repaved Orchard, oh, good, I'm gonna get all of this redone, and that just wasn't the case, they were very crystal clear on what they would pave and what they wouldn't do to them doing the survey. So I'm just, I think the.
Well, was it that they, just wondering, did they say it's not our property, or did they say we're just not repaving?
They said it's not our property, because I asked.
Okay.
Yep. So I'm just bringing up another example of just.
Just wondering, had it been paged previously?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
I wanna go there, that's a, that sounds like a sticky one. So 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 I guess the question, so we go at at the moment, are we, are we, we're worrying about a policy, not a particular situation, I guess, right? And
Well, the particular situation is going to bring up a policy.
Right, a- and and I guess the question for me is, I don't personally, at the moment, short of having the discussion with the city and the town about, you know, some kind of mutual enforcement, it seems to me that at at least in Arinda, and at least on the public roads, again, we should ask somebody who actually knows all this, and I assume somebody, the city's lawyer or somebody, I don't know whether they really own them or not, but I'm pretty sure the county gave all that stuff to them. The I I don't think we can ourselves give citations to people who don't own the property, just like we don't give them to tenants, we give them to landlords. And I think the same kind of thing would be true, which says, I guess, we're gonna give a lot of citations to city, the city and the town, and let them figure out how to enforce it. But that might prompt them to find a more creative solution that involves us and giving joint citations or something, which would be a lot more efficient if that was possible.
Director Danziger here, so if we presume the landowner's responsibility, wouldn't it be if we give a citation or a notice, wouldn't it be their responsibility to provide us with any legal documentation or 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 other information they have that?
The property's not theirs.
Would prove it.
Yes, sir, that's the California Civil Code eight thirty-one, is is explicit in that regard.
Yeah, except that if we can solve all that by in one, one question to the city and say, oh, by the way, all the all the public roads are owned by the city, that helps that problem, because that gets rid of that part of the civil code.
Yeah, and we we also have to consider the unincorporated areas of Canyon and Bollinger Canyon, which may be, you know, I I don't know what, how the county handles those those areas as well. I could, I could definitely see this being an issue in Canyon, unless, unless I, I'm not sure, unless the area adjacent to those roads is you know, East Bay mud or Parks, Parks Land, I'm really not sure, up in that area.
If, well, so maybe the easy thing would be to i- if if we, I'll say, set the bar low for what it takes to prove that it's not theirs. So, you know, if you can go in and show dedicated, you know, the the developers, for example, when they get a plan approved for a development, you know, it often says right on it, here are the roads I'm putting in, and by the way, they're dedicated to the county, and if the county accepts the plans, the county owns the property or the city or whoever it is. And then sometimes they don't accept them, by the way. So I think Wilder Road, or whatever the name of the big road is, goes to Wilder, is a public road, and the offshoots are not public roads, as an example. But the city knows that. So again, maybe we we give the citations but allow people an easy way to prove that they're not, and that means the burden goes back to the city or the town to enforce their ordinance. Which, again, I would hope would lead to a dialogue about how to efficiently do that in coordination with MOFD.
And do you, I'm just curious, do you have a proposal on what an easy way is?
Well, again, in my example of the city of Arinda, if it's obvious, you know, when the city became a city, if the county gave us all the public roads, there's probably some nice document that says that. And if that's true, then all the public roads in Arinda would be in one category, and all the ones that aren't on that list would by definition be in the other category.
I would guess that, I mean, they were both incorporated about the same time, that this, a similar approach must have been done in Maraga.
Well, the end, well, the end goal here is to get our residents in our district as safe as possible. And you know, we do, I I think, as a board, we should give the chief the tools that are fair to our constituents, but also enable him to proceed with code enforcement.
Sorry, my internet stopped for some reason. Sorry, my internet stopped for some reason.
Yeah, I I I agree, Mike. I I agree, President Donner, with what you stated.
I'm sorry, my computer froze for a second. Can you?
Yeah, Director Jorgens, I I said I'd like to, you know, support the chief in getting the district with as many residents as compliant as possible. As I'm sure everybody on the board is on that same page.
Absolutely.
And how do we effectively do that with not creating a super staff burden, which is already under a tremendous workload with the amount of projects that this staff is doing? How do we effectively do that?
And again.
Chief, this is Director Bates. I got a quick question for you.
Sure.
Is everything we've just talked about, you know, getting together with the county, getting together with Maraga, getting together with Arinda, figure out who owns what and who's supposed to clear what? Is that gonna be more work for you and your staff? Do you have the direction now with the ordinance that is written to take care of, you know, the violations?
Well, so I I think it's it, um, so that the question requires a little bit of context. From an immediate standpoint, it would mean dismissing over three hundred open citations, which, uh, for roadside vegetation that are, that were issued to the residents, not to the city. So it would mean dismissing those and and delivering those as a batch to the city and the town. Um, they're assuming that there are map layers available showing the, where the private roads are. Obviously, then, um, on the private roads, there's, there's some amount of work to identify who actually owns it. Sometimes it's an HOA, sometimes it's a Road Improvement Association. Uh, I'm not aware of a repository of that information, but we could find out. Um, so i- in in some ways, yes, there is additional staff burden on those elements. In the other areas, there's a significant reduction in staff burden. Because at least in the current environment, in the absence of an agreement, uh, or an MOU or other thing that would take time uh, to develop and and board action and city council action, town council action, et cetera. And it would be a reduction in staff work in those areas because the burden for enforcement would shift uh, to the city or mitigation, uh, at their choice. It would be the city or the town on those, as I said, over three hundred open violations that, uh, we would not be moving forward with since those are very likely on someone else's property other than the the property owner. Or that, sorry, the adjacent property owner under Civil Code eight three one that we've been using up to this point.
Okay. And then with that, are we just passing the buck on this? Are we just? And like President Donna was saying, we're looking for the most safe you know, area for our citizens. Are we just passing the buck down to the city now? And it's really not gonna get done. These, the clearances aren't gonna be taken care of. The the abatement's not gonna be taken care of. And we're just gonna be end up with the overgrown roads that we've had in the past.
Uh, but I wouldn't be comfortable characterizing whether or not the city or town are capable of enforcing their ordinances in those areas. That said, as discussed last month, um, in their current state, neither the city or the town are built for this. They they have limited, if if no enforcement capability, they have no field staff in that regard. Um, we are, we're primed for it, but I I do think that certainly the question to be resolved, and the question was ra- raised in the case of David Drive, is that Civil Code eight three one provides MOFD or any agency the ability to presume that the adjacent property owner is responsible, unless otherwise is proven. In the case of David Drive, otherwise was proven. Um, so in the case of David Drive, there really is not a legal mechanism for MOFD to move forward. We've dismissed those citations. Um, we've issued additional citations as the board directed for the other noncompliant portions of the parcel. The stuff in that case greater than seven feet from the roadside, or there there's a requirement to create a hundred foot fuel break on the parcels greater than one acre, um, as well as a hundred feet out from the the structures on those parcels. And at the same time, we've issued a pre-seditation to the town for the maintenance obligation they have on the town-owned land along the roadside. I I would have to defer to to the town, either the town council, the town staff, with regard to what following actions they will take, um, having been informed of their obligation to maintain that property.
Thank you very much.
Certainly.
And then, Chief, this is Director Donner. I have, um, out of the three hundred or so citations that you've issued, other than the one that was brought to our attention uh, at the last board meeting where the property line was being contested, how many of those three hundred citations are being contested as well in the same manner?
Uh, Marcia, if you're, I think we believe we have three hearing requests, uh, of those three hundred, uh, maybe four.
Yeah, we are down to, um, two.
Oh, very well, thank you. We have two hearing requests, um, for that. That said, I think that there certainly is the potential that, um, that that this now being better understood, we may see additional hearing requests if we were to move forward as people seek to to prove otherwise.
And of course, the irony is that, at the end of the day, one way or another, they're gonna be responsible for doing it. It's whether MOFD gets to enforce MOFD's code, or whether the city gets to enforce their requirement for the adjacent landholder to do it. Either way, they get, they get the same obligation.
Yes, sir. I think this is a clear distinction without a difference.
And just so, just so I'm clear on what Michael said earlier in his presentation, we have the right to cite these people. Is that correct? Michael?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, don't forget that when you say there's a presumption, Michael. If.
Michael, Michael Donner, or Michael attorney?
Michael attorney, sorry.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, sorry, I should be clear. Um, so the presumption is only valid if you think it's really true. So we can't make a presumption if we know it's not true. And so if it turns out we get to ask one question of the city of Arinda, and if they say, yes, we own all the roads that are public roads, then we, then that's not a valid excuse anymore.
Yes, sir. I was speaking in the abstract about the district's authority to issue citations. Um, certainly, if there's reasons to leave the presumption apply, then that raises different issues that we'll have to explore in terms of whether or not it's valid.
I I said also raises the issue on private roads. Some of, some isolated incidences, the owner actually does, the adjacent property actually does own to the center of the road. Others, they do not. And and then it is a rather opaque structure to determine who the, what entity actually owns those private roads.
But it's a lot easier to give that in those situations, as far as I'm concerned, we can give the people, because we can rely on that presumption, because nobody knows differently. But if we do know that Arinda does own all the public roads, then we can't have that solution. But all the rest of the roads, which is another third of the roads, by the way, at least in Arinda, then we can make that presumption and make the people prove to us that they don't own it. But again, we should point out to them that it's fine to have you prove to us, but all the city is gonna do is come by and make them live up to it anyway.
Um, so so, uh, the Director Danziger, so Chief, if if this board uh, had this, has, we haven't decided anything yet, but if the board said we want you to just enforce twenty oh one and twenty one oh one as they are, does that create a problem? And maybe take a little further and say, let's open the discussion with the town, the county and the city. The, is that, is that, would you, you need direction, what to do, right? I mean, so would that be? I I'm not saying that's it, but would that be a solution if the board just says enforce those those, uh, ordinances we have? As more.
Yes, sir, that, to date, our, the status quo has been to assume the adjacent property owner is responsible as as allowed by the law, the 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 sort of the, the new element is that, um, the the property owner can prove otherwise, um, and that, as in the case of David, when they do, we we dismiss the citation. The alternative, the direction I've heard is to presume that that all publicly owned roads, the adjacent property owner does not own it, and that the the city or town does, and that we would then withdraw, we would identify, we uh, attempt to obtain or create on our own a map layer showing pub, a road ownership, public or private. Then we would identify which of the public roads had citations for roadside vegetation to the abutting landowner. We would dismiss those, and we would reissue those citations to the city and the town, um, for whatever action they they chose to take. So there there've definitely been two. There have been two potential outcomes proposed, and and I do need the board's direction about how to proceed.
Okay.
And I guess, just to put a fine point on it, as Director Jorgens pointed out, all this is very likely, after some delay, to come right back to the person who has issued the original citation is still responsible, just they've got a citation of a slightly different flavor.
Excuse me for one second, somebody's at my door.
So one of the things I can imagine, you know, if if we show up at the city's door and say, by the way, here are three hundred citations that we're gonna give you, and there's a fine that goes with them, let's have a really quick meeting to discuss what the alternatives are. Um, and and maybe we have a special City of Arinda council meeting, and you know, it doesn't, doesn't necessarily have to take a long time to uh, you know, draft a, an agreement about, assuming it's legally possible to have some sort of a joint enforcement capability. And it doesn't have to take months and months to do that. I realize it's government entities, and that doesn't make things faster, but you know.
Yes, sir, it's for government entities. I I would not under, I would, I would not underestimate how how long it would take and how much complexity of going into getting a four-way agreement on something like this.
Why does that be a four-way agreement?
Uh, city to town and the county.
What's the county have to do with it?
Unincorporated county lands in Bollinger and Canyon, sir.
Well, we can just not do those upfront. I mean, it can be, you know, it doesn't have to be a four-way agreement. It's a, it's three one-way agreements. Two-way.
Yes, sir. But, yes, sir, I think that, in fact, probably make it more complex, um, doing it in series instead of parallel.
Okay.
This is Director Jex. I I think we have two issues with regards to timing. What we've already done this year, and we're you know, two or three months into the process, I think would be difficult to stop the process that we're currently following. And, you know, try and negotiate another assumption and then end up in November issuing the citations or the city or whatever it would be. It seems to me what we're looking at is, I would just recommend that we proceed with what we're doing. And then, in the meantime, try and with, working with the city of Arinda, Maraga, and if the county, you know, is appropriate, do it, you know, for next year in terms of changing the approach, because I think to to do otherwise, we're just gonna muddy the word, uh, you know, the situation we're in. It 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 seems to me if we've had three or four people who've done it, I would imagine we're not gonna have a landslide of people trying to dodge the issue at this point.
I I'm in, I'm in agreement with Director Jex. Uh, I say that we proceed. And I think Marcia said we're down to two people, uh, arguing the citation process that's less than one percent of the three hundred. And I think that we proceed and try to get the bulk of this work done with our evacuation routes, which I think is of the utmost importance with our few arteries that we have in and out of here.
I concur with that. I think Director Jex is spot on. We have to continue as is and then work with the City of Arinda, Maraga, and the county. We can't leave them out on this, but work with them for next year. I think that's a good call.
I I I don't think we can issue more citations, but it doesn't sound like that's the mode we're in anyway. At least not on the public roads in Arinda. I I wouldn't think that would be reasonable. So hopefully, we've already written all of our citations then.
Yes, sir, we're, other than complaints, we're, we're essentially done with the the issuing of citations, and we're, we're still cleaning up the outstanding citations from the big push in June.
I I would also support, uh, just continuing with the process, uh, pursuant to twenty oh one and twenty one oh one. So.
Well, shall we, uh?
Do you need more guidance from that, Chief?
Yes, sir, I believe I have the the direction I need unless there's there's further input from the board.
Would you like to open public comment?
Sure, we can open a public comment. Thank you, Marcia. I will open a public comment on agenda item three point one.
So we do not have any hands raised, and we've not received written public comment.
Thank you, Marcia. I will close public comment on agenda.
Really?
Point one, go ahead.
I'm sorry, really quick, just Chief, just so we're all clear. The direction that you believe that you have. What do you believe you have?
To continue the enforcement of the existing ordinance, citations we've issued under the current procedure, understanding on the Civil Code eight three one, resident may show, uh, may prove otherwise that they do not, um, they're not responsible for, or they're not own the, uh, the property to the center of the road, in which case we would determine the appropriate owner, either the city, the town, uh, an HOA or, um, Road Maintenance Association, uh, whoever the case may be, and issue the citation to them. Under eight three one, uh, otherwise may be proven, uh, essentially meaning that if a resident, uh, asserts that they don't own it, they have to show who does, which simplifies the the reassignment of the citation process from our perspective. So when that occurs in the current environment, uh, it would maintain, uh, continue unchanged. We would um, rescind the existing citation, refund any fines that may have been paid, and then reissue the citation to the property who is determined to be the owner. At the same time, we'll begin the staff discussion. I I do need to emphasize that this will take elected official engagement. So I'll begin the staff uh, to staff engagement, uh, on this discussion, and we will move to schedule joint meetings with the city, the town, uh, MOFD and representative of the board of SUCs to identify the appropriate way to move forward, uh, and at that, in that venue, we could explore the opportunities for either, uh, joint enforcement or contract under which MOFD could do the enforcement, um, whatever the case may be, to to ensure that for um, fire season twenty three, um, we have, um, we have something appropriate in place.
Great. Thank you so much, Chief.
Sure.
Thank you, Chief. Next slide, please, Marcia.
And Directors, if I, if I may, uh, with my apologies for for being out of, out of order that this was included, uh, under the MOFD rules of procedure for the the district board, eight, section eight point four, tie votes. Uh, tie votes should be lost motions when all district board members are present, a tie vote, and whether a grant, you grant an appeal, et cetera, et cetera, um, should takes note, will have no further consideration of the matter. If a tie vote results at a time when less than all board members are present, the matter shall automatically be continued to the agenda of the next regular meeting of the district board unless other order, otherwise ordered uh, by the district board. So in this particular case, um, this was a tie vote when not all members of the board were present uh, and should not have been included on the special meeting agenda, should be carried over to the next regular meeting on the third Wednesday of the month, uh, when we will include it on the agenda again. So I would, um, strongly recommend pulling this item as it was included uh, out of, um, out of the normal procedure.
I'm fine with that. If, let's follow the rules and regulations, and we will do this at the next board meeting, and I recommend, uh, with your recommendation on pulling item three point two until our Wednesday, regular Wednesday meeting on this twenty first.
Is the twenty first?
Okay.
I I agree with all that. Is that really when, is it the twenty first?
It is, it is the twenty first.
Oh, good, okay, sorry.
Thank you, Chief.
Sure. Thanks, Chief.
Next slide, please, Marcia. Um, I'm not gonna open up public comments on this particular agenda item since it's been pulled. I will open up public comment on that next, at the next regular meeting. And, uh.
I'm joining the meeting.
Second that.
All right, Marcia, do we?
Director Bates?
Yep.
Director Danziger?
Aye, aye.
Director Jex?
Aye.
Director Jorgens?
Aye.
President Donner?
Aye, thank you, and stay cool, everybody.
Okay, bye.
Thanks.
Hi, Steve.